Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of April 17, 2023. In accordance with L.B. 898, please find a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should please come forward after the clerk reads that item. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, the name of an organization or group, including an address that you may be representing by such person or group unless the address requirements are waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal. Each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, organization or group, and whether you are speaking in favor of or in opposition to that item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per person. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month, immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. Madam Clerk, will you please read the first item of business?
Our first item of business today on our agenda for April 17, 2023 is our consent agenda, Sections 1 and Sections 2.
Is there anyone present to speak on these items? Items 1 and number 2. Anyone present? Seeing none, let's move on.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 1A is Investment Activity Report for Quarter Ending February 28, 2023, introduced by Suarez.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Chauv?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. Items 2A and 2D were introduced by Chauv.
It's all moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Chauv?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes our consent agenda. We shall now move on to Section 4, our public hearing legal resolutions. I'll call items 4A and 4B together. Application of Conqueter Brewing Company, LLC doing business as Side Show Spirits Boombox Social for special designated licenses to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 15 feet by 15 feet at the Haymarket Farmers Market at 7th and P Streets on May 6, 13th, 20th, and 27th from 5:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. June 3, 10, 17, 24; from 5:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. July 1, 8, 15, 22, and 29; from 5:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. August 5, 12, 19, 26, 23, 2023; from 5:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And the application of Conqueter Brewing Company, LLC doing business as Beer House Mashiller for a special designated license to cover an outdoor area measuring approximately 68 feet by 50 feet at 151 North 8th Street on September 16, 23, 30th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. October 21st and 28th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. and November 11th and 24th from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m.
Hey, Council. Cody Schmick, C-O-D-Y-S-C-H-M-I-C-K, office at 1630 P Street. Great job getting all those dates, Sony. The first one, we are participating in Farmers Market this year for our distillery, so we're going to do small samples under our tent alongside Glacial Till and some other wineries. Those are the dates we want to do for that. This 4B, there is a beautiful rooftop four stories up from Beer House Mashiller that the Speedway guys are going to let us use for game days. We're going to be throwing some kind of tailgate events up there as well. So, any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you. I did, you answered my question. I was confused about outdoor versus, because I didn't see a tent or anything, so I was wondering where this was supposed to be located. I didn't get that, didn't get that from the information, but your presentation answered that question, so thank you.
You bet. Yeah, we have normal license, everyday license on our patio, but then this would be addition up above, so.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions?
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
See ya.
All right. Councilwoman, is there anyone else present on this item that would like to testify? All right. Seeing none, Councilwoman Chauv, would you like to move these items?
Yes, Madam Chair. Seeing no one else coming forward, I'd like to move approval of items 4A and 4B.
Second.
Seconded by Suarez. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius? Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Chauv?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0. That concludes Section 4 of our agenda. We shall now move on to Section 5, our public hearing resolutions. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March 16 through March 31, 2023.
Is there anyone present to testify on this item? A claims report? Anyone here? All right. Seeing none, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 5B, Comprehensive Plan Conformance 23003, application of the Urban Development Director to review us to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Van Dorn Redevelopment Plan by adding approximately 102 acres, Van Dorn Park, adjacent street right-of-ways, and several neighboring privately owned properties on the property generally located at 9th and Van Dorn Streets, amending the redevelopment area boundary generally bounded by Hill Street on the north, 13th Street on the east, Lowell Street on the south, and 7th Street on the west, also including the pedestrian crossing and Van Dorn Park Enhancement Project, with a project area that includes Van Dorn Park, a public right-of-way along 9th, 10th, High and Van Dorn Streets, as well as the parcel located at 2744 South 9th Street on the property generally located at 10th and Van Dorn Streets.
Good afternoon, council members. Hallie Salem, Urban Development Department, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 205. As Sony explained, this is the amendment to the 2008 Van Dorn Redevelopment Plan. The total area is 102 acres. This is just amending to add a portion of it. So I'll be talking about two things, as Sony mentioned, that are going to happen to the redevelopment plan today. The first is the expansion of the redevelopment area to include the area previously designated by city council on December 19 to add the blighted and substandard area, or, excuse me, that was December 19 that city council determined that to be blighted and substandard. That's the area in orange that we're then adding to the 2008 redevelopment area number one that's shown in yellow. So the total area is 102 acres. And then, and then the plan also included, the plan included mainly right-of-way and public property, and then also included some private property along High Street. And that area then, just as a reminder, that area is added to potentially add some connections, sidewalk connections to help with pedestrian crossing to Van Dorn Park. The redevelopment plan is being replaced with a revised plan that includes some updates to the maps, which is the main reason for this overall replacement, as well as doing some cleanup to make adjustments to some improvements to the park, including the natural trail that was installed, the pollinator garden that we'd like to preserve in Van Dorn Park, as well as desired improvements to the parking facilities in the park, and then safe access to the park, as well as just bringing up some problems that Roberts Cave is having and preserving that cave. So we wanted to acknowledge that. Then the second item is specifically to add, in red, the pedestrian crossing and Van Dorn Park Enhancement Project. So the overall area is in the black, and then in the red is that project area. And that project identifies approximately $150,000 in public financing generated from TIF in that project area. So it includes area north of Van Dorn that is either has been previously redeveloped or is undergoing construction as we speak, and that can be dedicated then to the improvements. And the three main improvement projects identified in this area are the pedestrian crossing, the improvements to Van Dorn Park, and then the third is neighborhood signage that has been brought up. And we've met with members of the South Salt Creek Neighborhood Association, as well as the Indian Village Neighborhood Association. Irvingdale Neighborhood Representatives attended Indian Village Neighborhood Association meetings for updates. We have several members of Indian Village Neighborhood Association here today to talk about their support for the project. We've also discussed these improvements at the Van Dorn Park Open House that was held by the Parks Department, and then, and specifically talked about it at the open house regarding improvements to pedestrian crossing. The Planning Commission reviewed the amendment to the plan and found it consistent with the 2050 Comprehensive Plan. The next steps will be to divide taxes in this area, hold meetings with Lincoln Transportation and Utilities, Parks, Neighborhood Representatives, and any other interested staff, and determine how best to use those funds, and potentially identify other source of funding for these improvements. And we know that Parks is undertaking a separate planning process, and will continue doing that, including this, this project as part of their planning efforts as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Hallie. Any questions from Ms. Salem? No, all right. Thank you very much. Anyone else present to testify on this item?
Hello, my name is Diane Valkoviac, and I live at 1600 Sioux Street. I've been active in the Indian Village Neighborhood Association, and have also worked with Van Dorn Park for a few years. There's great public support for the revised Van Dorn Redevelopment Plan, expanding the area included, improving infrastructure in the area, especially like sidewalks, we really lack sidewalks, and most importantly, creating a safe crossing over Nebraska Parkway to Van Dorn Park. When IFNA, the Indian Village Neighborhood Association, was formed 30 years ago, that was one of our goals, was getting that safe crossing. Well, the South Beltway is finally done, yay, and Van Dorn Park has come back to life. A lot of improvements have been made to the park just in the last four years, and this has increased people, the number of people coming to the park. So, a lot of activity going on over there. As Hallie mentioned, work is underway by Parks and Rec to create a master plan for Van Dorn Park, and so far, input, public input from park users has identified concern about safe access for pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists, and this redevelopment plan addresses that. The users have also expressed appreciation for all the mature trees, the natural untamed areas, habitat for wildlife, the native plants, the pollinator projects. They want more playground equipment, restrooms, and the mountain bike trail, natural surface trail, they would like that to be permanent, because that trail has been so successful in Van Dorn Park. It has really been popular, and it has increased the number of people coming to the park. And so making that a permanent feature is one of our main goals. And also, are you surprised? People would like to get rid of that darn material storage area that I've talked about before. All of these projects and plans are dovetailing nicely. Don't you love it when that happens? I'd like to stress that the preference for the safe crossing would be for an at-grade crossing at 10th and High with a traffic signal. Even though the South Beltway has removed a lot of the semi-truck traffic, there's still a lot of other vehicles going through there, and those little flashy ped lights just aren't that safe when you've got that much traffic going by. The crossing will connect Busalis and Bison Trails finally, which would be great. It would provide safe access to the trails in the park for pedestrians and cyclists. It would help calm traffic along that corridor. And if you have a traffic signal, it also helps motorists, because if you've ever been at that intersection and you try to make a left turn, you sit there forever, and then some people just step on the gas when they can, and it's really dangerous. We appreciate all the work that has been done by so many people to update this Van Dorn redevelopment project and focus on the Indian Village Van Dorn Park area. So we thank you for everybody's interest and support of our neighborhood. Any questions?
Thank you, Diane. Questions, comments? Thank you very much. Next testifier, please.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Andy Gick. I'm the Vice President of Indian Village Neighborhood Association. I live at 2918 South 13th. As you watch me walk up the aisle, I can tell you as a fact, I can't cross from our neighborhood to the park, either way, unless I'm ready to take my life in my own hands and put another cross up on that corner. There were two until somebody removed them. We don't need three. That is the single most important thing we can do at this point, is continue what we're doing and then add a safe crossing. If the council is not willing to find a way to make that happen, I'm sorry to say, part of the blame will fall on you, much like we did at Saratoga School, because I know you enforced it, even though you may not have done it directly. Your displeasure of what was happening caused a lot of work to happen in Saratoga by LTU. It's a great intersection now. It's slower, safer, and don't we want all of our intersections to be safe for our children, our bicycles, our disabled, our elderly, and even young families? All the other things in the park are wonderful, but what will happen if we can't use it? Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Dick. Next testifier?
Hello, my name is Megan Grimes. I live at 1617 Nimaah Street, and I'm President of the Indian Village Neighborhood Association, testifying in support of the Van Dorn Park Redevelopment Plan. Today, I'd like to speak specifically to the pedestrian crossing that two neighbors in front of me testified about. The exact configuration and the style hasn't been selected in this plan, so this is a great opportunity to safely connect our neighborhood to Van Dorn Park and then the existing trail network. I believe a traffic signal, while more expensive, would be the safest pedestrian crossing option. Many residents tried to turn right and left from that high street intersection to enter Nebraska Parkway. Due to the close proximity of the gas station at the southeast corner of High Street, as well as the four lanes of traffic and the high speed of the traffic, it's difficult to actually turn in either direction. It was mentioned about the left turn, but it's actually hard to turn right there as well. There's been more than one fatality at the high street intersection, and a traffic signal would allow pedestrians a safe crossing, but also allow those vehicles to exit the neighborhood onto Nebraska Parkway. So the pedestrian crossing would also be a critical hike bike trail connection, as it will connect the Busalis Trail to the Bison Trail, which then gives residents the opportunity to connect to Salt Creek Lovey Trail, Wilderness Park Trails, Jamaica North Trail, and eventually the Prairie Corridor, so people can bike all the way to Denton. Currently, it's too dangerous to cross Nebraska Parkway. Our family loads all our bikes in the car, drives across the street, unloads, and then bikes to Pioneer's Park on the Bison Trail. So in the future, we hope to safely cross and be able to bike all those trails directly from our neighborhood. So in conclusion, I, along with the Indian Village Neighborhood Association, support the Van Dorn Park Redevelopment Plan and hope you'll make an investment in a signalized pedestrian crossing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Are there questions, comments? Thank you very much. Are there more testifiers on this item? Any additional testifiers? Rosalina? Yes, yes.
I'm Zina Peolini, 1850 Dakota. I am so excited about this project. Some of us remember when, I mean, I ride through the park a lot, and I was picking up syringes, and we don't do that anymore. It's really fun. The activities that go on in the park, the rental shelter is heavily used. I was riding through there yesterday. I know it was really windy, but everybody was out, and they had a birthday party, and it was like heavily used. So this is a park that has really become a solid neighborhood park. In regard, I thought I could pull up a wonderful little video of 4:30 at that intersection, which is deafening, but it actually gets more deafening as you go. At 4:30, it's usually about a minute. For me, a skilled rider to get across the intersection, wake time, it just increases as the day gets later. Being a frequent user of that park, we have a lot of kids crossing that intersection. They come from both Merle Beatty, yeah, Merle Beatty, and Saratoga, and there just really isn't a safe crossing at 9th and Van Dorn, at 9th and High, at 9th and anything. In a neighborhood association meeting, I was really impressed that the idea of traffic calming maybe even as far back as, say, 20th would be helpful as you're coming into a pretty active area coming up to 9th and High, where you literally can't see over the hill. And so maybe even just gentle traffic calming might be a solution. I try to provide a solution when I come up here. Any questions at all?
Any questions?
And what a great use of TIF funding, I forgot to say. Thank you so much for being here. Thanks for all your hard work.
Thank you. Anyone else present to testify on this item? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
I'll be calling item 5C, waiver 23003, application of Laura Roberts to waive parking requirements to allow zero parking stalls for a private school on property generally located at 2325 South 24th Street.
Hello, I'm Denise Pertser. I am the Senior Warden at St. Matthew's Episcopal Church, which is essentially the board, head of the board. To give you an idea, this is where the church lies. It's at 24th and Sewell. We have been around since 1925 for over almost 100 years now. We're coming up on our anniversary. And as part of that preparation, we wanted to find ways to better utilize the property inside and out. We have an educational wing that is completely underutilized. So we felt very blessed when we came up on the potential partnership with Blue Stem Montessori, of which Laura Roberts will come up and speak in more detail as to what that means. But we feel like we have an opportunity here to utilize the building, bring wonderful young voices into the neighborhood, and add to the overall feeling of the building and the use of it. We've talked to several households in the neighborhood. I've reached out to some, and some have reached out to us. All of them have been in favor to this point, once we gave them information on the fact that this isn't a huge school. It's less than 30 students that we're talking about, and the number of cars that are impacted won't be huge as well. In fact, most of our Sunday services have more cars than what the school would bring on a daily basis. To give a little bit more information, we've got one part-time office person, as far as our staff, and currently a part-time rector. So there is only a car there for the church purposes, maybe a couple during the day. I'll hand it over to Laura at this point, unless there are any other questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Laura Roberts. I'm the Executive Director of Blue Stem Montessori Elementary School, which currently is located at 6300 A Street, but as Denise said, we are hoping to move into St. Matthew's Episcopal Church next year. I wanted to clarify the number of cars that we are talking about and the number of families at Blue Stem Montessori. So currently, we have 25 students. Next year, we're We have 21 families, because there are several siblings at our school. And just, I just thought I'd go through the different times of the day to tell you about how many cars we have. So throughout the whole day, we're talking about staff cars that are there during the school day, and that's between two and five staff cars that would be there all day. Our school day runs from 8:30 to 3:15. Staff arrives at 8:00, and then regular staff leaves between like 3:30 and 5:00. And then we have an aftercare program that runs from 3:30 to 6:00. So we've got, that's, that's when the school would be in operation. So for the majority of the day, the staff cars are two to five staff cars. Drop off is something that I think people are a little concerned about. Again, we have 21 families. Most families would stay right now between like 1:00 and 10:00 minutes, depending on whether they want to chat with a teacher or something. But generally, what we have, because pick, drop off is between 8:15 and 8:30, and most people just kind of stop, bring their kid in, and then leave, we've got about six cars at a time of family cars. We also have four families that are within walking distance that I know are kind of excited about the prospect of walking to school. So that's four less families that would be dropping off at that time. Pickup, we usually have like 10 to 13 families staying for aftercare, so that's families that wouldn't be picking up at 3:15. So normally, we have between five and seven cars at a time at pickup, and that's an even faster time, like people are there between like 1:00 and 5:00 minutes, because everyone just wants to get their kid and like get out of there. So, you know, that's, that's not very long, and that's between 3:15 and 3:30. And then aftercare, people just pick up like throughout 3:30 to 6 o'clock. So that's like one parent car at a time, and most of the time, zero parent cars. So we're really not talking about a lot of parking need. And the other thing I wanted to point out is that I don't think any of our families mind the idea of like parking a couple blocks away and walking. Like, we're not talking about people like waiting for someone to pull out, and then no one minds walking a little bit further. So, yeah, is there any questions that, that I can answer about the school?
Thank you for this. Yes, Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Ms. Roberts, for coming forward. I wanted to ask just a couple of questions, because I have received two letters of folks saying that they don't support this. And it just gave me some, gave me a couple of questions to ask. So what might a future student body be? So like, can you stay at this location until how many students? What's your capacity?
We, I think the most that we would have there, potentially, we could maybe double our student body at that location. But we would be willing, so what we're thinking is potentially opening a preschool in a couple years. We would be willing, if the city council wanted us to, to stagger parking for that, which would keep the numbers of cars there at the, at the same rate. Like, we could have preschool start at 9:00 AM, right, instead of 8:30 AM. But even with double the amount of cars at a time, that would be, you know, 12 cars parked in the morning. So, yeah, I think probably double that capacity to like 50 students.
And what would that do with your staffing, if you had 50 students?
Staffing, we would, if we were to open a preschool, that would be two more staff members.
And could you, could you talk a little bit about what you and the church have organized around drop off? Like, would it be, so you said that parents wouldn't mind dropping a couple, parking a couple blocks away? So drop off isn't like they pull up to the church and hand the kid off?
Right. Right. So what our parents do is they park their car, and then they walk their kids in. We have a sign-in system so that we always know exactly who we've got, and, you know, if somebody is late or something, we've got a record of who dropped off and, and when they arrived. And then a sign-out system as well. So parents have to walk in with their kids. It also, you know, gives us a chance to touch base with the parents and like address anything we need to talk about. So, yeah, there's no like pull-up and your kid runs out of the car to the school. So there won't be like a line situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
That's it? Thank you.
Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also had a question about future growth plans, so thank you, Councilwoman Washington, for bringing that up. I also got some communication about concerns about future school growth, the relatively narrow streets that are there. Sounds like you're really attentive and really empathetic to that condition. I think there's some level of added burden to the neighborhood in terms of parking, but I also, it's balanced with this positive school use of unfilled space. I really like the idea of this unfilled space, this educational wing being used for a good purpose, and I believe it is a good purpose that you're doing, but a little bit of concern about the narrow streets and the additional parking, especially if you were to grow. What would your pace be? Are you looking to grow as fast as possible, or slowly, or what, what plans do you have?
I mean, I would say medium, which I know is not the best answer, but like, we don't want to grow super fast, because I don't think that's super healthy. So probably, I would guess, if we were to open a preschool in a year or two, I would guess probably 10, 10 to 15 students in that class, and then grow it up to maybe 20 to 25. But, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that, it wouldn't be super fast in terms of growth.
Well, I know that we, as a city, need more preschool options, so thank you for thinking of that. Do you think your families would be, I guess, amenable to parking on the north side of the church? Because I know that the, it's located, your school, the educational wing's located on the south side, but I know that it seems to be, the street seems a little wider on the north side. Would they be, you know, okay to walk around that block?
I, I don't think most of our families would particularly care where they had to park. I could see a few families who have like young children that they're bringing with them to drop off, asking to park on the south side, so that they have less, you know, less to walk with a baby or something, but I think most families wouldn't care.
Yeah. And I know that families will park wherever they need to park. I'm just curious about if the neighbors were to express additional concerns, they would probably talk to you and just to see if that was an option.
Yeah, and we could always, you know, at least, at the very least, we could just make a suggestion, like, you know, please try and park on the north side if you can, or we could, you know, if that, if you guys wanted us to make that a requirement, we could, and then, you know, get exceptions for people who needed it, or that type of thing.
I don't see us needing that, but I do appreciate the, the use of unfilled space and the idea of a potential preschool. I think those are good uses for that space.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman McGinnis?
Yeah, a couple of quick questions. Is Blue Stem leasing this space from St. Matthews?
Yeah, we would be leasing it from St.
How long of the lease is it?
I think...
It hasn't finalized, we're talking about three years.
Okay.
Yeah, and then like we could extend it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the council?
I have a quick question. It may be for our staff. So Director Carey, thanks for being here. I was curious as to whether the parking lot applied, I know we're not talking about surfacing it, but whether it applies to the church or to you as being nonprofit, because clearly the church is, but you're private. So Director Carey, could, I think it's for Director Carey. Could you explain to us the history and the position of the planning staff, because it was not a planning commission decision?
Sure. David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street. So this is slightly different than some of those that we've brought before you before, which is the, whether we're paving or not paving a parking lot or parking spaces for a nonprofit. This is specifically a requirement in the code, the zoning code. When a use is either changed or added to a site, and then the parking that otherwise would be required is being requested to not be required. And so this is the, the specific process that can be taken by an applicant, in this case, a Montessori school within an existing church. So this is a specific action. It's a waiver of the parking standards based on those conditions. And so the way that the rules are set up, these types of waivers do not need to go to planning commissions, but they do need to come to the city council.
Okay. Thank you for that. Thank you. That's what I was curious about, as to whether, are there any expectations for that lot for the church that have ever come before us?
To my knowledge, it hasn't come before us in any formal way. What we did, a little bit of background on the, the location, and the church has been there for many, many, many years. So it's, it's a, it's an existing condition as far as we consider it.
Sure. Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have. Any other, yes, sorry, before you go.
Just one more question. Because the church has been there for almost 100 years, and I think I understood in reading through the materials, that the church used to operate a school there in the same location?
Yes. So basically, there, which is an atypical of some churches, where they have, you know, a wing that's available for a school, for a prokial school. So that's not being used now for that purpose, which is the way that we've looked at this as a planning staff, that this makes sense, that another school could come in and use the space and be, make the facility that's existing more productive.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Director Carey? He's here. Thank you very much. All right. Any further questions for our applicants at all? Okay. All right. I think we're good. Anyone else present that would like to testify? Yes, please come forward.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Niehaus. It's N-I-E-H-A-U-S. I'm currently at 9351 Egleton Lane, but importantly, in about a month, I will be at 2424 Ryans, which is about two blocks from St. Matthews. I also happen to be a parent of two Blue Stem students. So I am one of those families whose kids could walk to school if we move. And so I just wanted to come and express my support for the waiver. As a parent, I, I think that the numbers that Laura gave are on the high end, from what I observe as a parent, of how many cars are in place at any given time. I can speak for the parent community that we're excited about this possible location. It's an ideal place for the school, way better than we thought we could find in a new spot. And so I think as, as parents, we are willing to do what needs to be done to logistically make this work for us, for our kids, for the school, and for the neighborhood. As a new person in the neighborhood, I definitely don't want to be moving in and irritating all of the other neighbors. So just want to say that we appreciate any support that y'all can give us. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else present that would like to testify on this item? Anyone else? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
We cannot vote on these items. Item 5A is accepting and approving the report of new impending claims against the city for March 16th through March 31st, 2023, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved. Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5B is comprehensive plan conformance 23003, application of the Urban Development Director to review as to conformance with the 2050 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan, a proposed amendment to the Van Dorn redevelopment plan by adding approximately 102 acres, Van Dorn Park adjacent street right of ways, and several neighboring privately-owned properties on the property generally located at 9th and Van Dorn Streets. Amending the redevelopment area boundary generally bounded by Hill Streets on the north, 13th Street on the east, Lowell Street on the south, and 7th Street on the west, also including the pedestrian crossing in Van Dorn Park Enhancement Project, with the project area that includes Van Dorn Park. Public right of ways along 9th and 10th, High and Van Dorn Streets, as well as the parcel located at 2744 South 9th Street on the property generally located at 10th and Van Dorn Streets, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 5C is waiver 23003, application of Laura Roberts to waive parking requirements to allow zero parking stalls for a private school on property generally located at 2325 South 24th Street, introduced by Shoeb.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by McGinnis. Further discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. As an alumni of St. Matthews preschool.
Now we know.
I can go back and remember when.
We're sorry.
I could never sleep on a, on a mat, take a nap on a mat. But, and growing up in the area, and my father and my family were members of St. Matthews for many, many years, over the years. I, I have a little concern, because I know the traffic going up and down 24th Street gets busy during, during the day and during school days because of Irving a little bit. And so I do have some concern about that, but what I really do is I have a lot of faith in the St. Matthews group of people, that they will be able to police this themselves. Learning that there's a lease, and if it gets out of hand, I know they would be able to take care of it. So I'd be truly in favor of this. I think it's a good thing for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Councilwoman Washington.
Thank you very much. I, too, am going to vote in support, and I'm, I'm going to vote in support because I love the idea of a building that has held a school, continuing to hold a school, and I think it's a good use of historical space. And I, too, live in the neighborhood, and I walk by a lot, and I've seen the traffic on Sundays, and I see how crowded it gets. But I am confident that the number of cars that you mentioned for staff are not like on Sunday mornings. And the neighborhood, though there may be some grumbling about the amount of traffic on Sundays, you've been able to make that work, and so I believe that you'll be able to make this next phase work as well on Monday through Friday, and I wish you the very best of luck.
Thank you. Any further comments? All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. That concludes Section 5 of our agenda. We shall move on to Section 6, Public Hearing Ordinance's Second Reading and Related Resolutions. I'll be calling items 6A, 6B, and 6C together. Item 6A is approving the union of, excuse me, approving the Union at Antelope Valley Redevelopment Agreement between the City and Union at Antelope Valley for the redevelopment of property generally located at 18th Street and K Streets, and the Fiscal Year 2223 CIP to authorize and appropriate $3,400,000 in tax increment financing for the Union at Antelope Valley Redevelopment Project, and the related tax allocation bond for the Union at Antelope Valley Redevelopment Project in the amount not to exceed $3,400,000.
Good afternoon. Dan Marvin, Urban Development, 555 South 10th Street. I'm here along with David Wesner with Annex Group to kind of discuss what's before you. There's three items, redevelopment agreement, CIP amendment, and the bond ordinance. This project is another in the projects we've been trying to bring to this body. This would be a low-income housing tax credit project. They are receiving funding, and I believe later this year, we would bring the issuance of those bonds that will be granted through the Lytech project. It's 187 units. They're going to use income averaging. I think David will be much better equipped at explaining the types of ranges of people that will be in the building. But it will provide 30-year housing affordability for 187 multifamily units. The other unique things about this building, they will have parking within the building, so there'll be a podium, underground parking for 199 stalls. There'll be electrical charging units in there, because as we change and adapt, there may be fueling sources and the need for electrical charging in the building. There'll be bicycle storage, and I think those are both appropriate for this building. um, there may be fueling sources and the need for electrical charging in the building. Uh, there'll be bicycle storage, uh, and I think those are both appropriate uh for this building. Um, they're going to use some green building practices, so there is uh the use of uh a small amount of tax increment financing for this building. Um, the total amount of tax increment financing, um, authorized debts, three-point-four million dollars. Um, here's the, I think, one of the things that I will bring to your attention just from my experience working with various developers, some of the um right-of-way improvements will be um building out. This street here is in some need, so of additional asphalt. So after they've gone in there, they'll actually be using some of our TIF funds for um repurposing or reconditioning um this particular street. This area here is uh the Antelope Valley Parkway. Um, the um, so this is Eighteenth Street, this is Antelope Valley Parkway, uh, K Street and L, and they will be occupying the whole area that is on that block with um a series of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom apartments. Um, I might stop there and ask and see if there's any questions you'd have.
Thank you, Director Marvin. Questions or comments? Seeing none, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Hi, my name is Allison Boer. I'm an attorney at Klein Williams, two-three-three South Thirteenth Street, Suite nineteen-hundred. I'm here on behalf of the developer, and like Mr. Marvin said, Dan Wesner from the development team is here to answer any project-specific questions you might have. I thought that he gave an excellent summary of the specifics of the, of the project itself. So I would just add that I think it's a very good project for the city of Lincoln. I think it checks a lot of important boxes for redevelopment, uh, infill housing development in the city. This is an empty lot, onsite parking, and then building out that future infrastructure for those electric vehicle charging stations. But most importantly, it's going to create a hundred and eighty-seven units of affordable housing in downtown. Um, one hundred percent of those units are going to be affordable at the eighty percent AMI amount. Uh, what that really means is as a low-income housing tax credit project, the rents are going to be restricted, and the developer will not be able to increase the rents for forty-five years from the date that the apartment building is placed in service. So maximum rents will be thirty percent of gross income of the sixty percent AMI amount. So that means that an individual or a family making sixty percent of the AMI for Lincoln will pay no more than thirty percent of their gross income towards rent. So those rents are set by NIFA and required for those low-income housing tax credits. And in addition to all the obligations in the redevelopment agreement, which are really those minimum standards for affordability, there's going to be a land use restriction agreement with NIFA for forty-five years. It's going to require even more of the developer in terms of rent restriction obligations.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, before you leave, could Councilwoman Washington?
Um, Ms. Boer, thank you for coming forward. Um, I thought I had asked all the questions I had of uh Andrew Willis over the weekend, but now I have another one for you. All right, since you went into a little bit of the numbers, about um a hundred and eighty-seven units, forty-five years, thirty percent of sixty percent AMI, okay. Um, are utilities included within that, or what utilities are included within the rent?
Yep, I'll defer to David.
David Wesner with the Annex Group, uh, probably have some more information on the nuts and bolts. Uh, so on this project specifically, utilities, uh, the electric is not included, water sewer is included. So uh, but but what that means, um, according to Lytech standards, is we have to take the maximum allowed rent, and we subtract out the utility allowance uh that's set by the local housing authority every year. So the rent will be reduced for whatever electricity charges that we're charging for the project.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Suarez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this is an exciting project. I mean, a hundred and eighty-seven units, and I really appreciated the way it was laid out. It was very readable. I liked the floor-floor plans laid out. A question I have um is about section eight vouchers. Is that something that will be accepted or not, or why?
Yeah, under the Lytech program, we're required to accept section eight vouchers, so yes.
Is there a percentage or any or?
Uh, whichever ones apply, and we, we've been working uh closely with the Lincoln Housing Authority to make sure that um they know that the project's available. We're actually currently the developers at Union at Middle Creek, which is uh out on the west side of town. Um, that'll be finishing up completion. I was just on the site uh today, and that'll be finishing up in the fall. Um, so we'll be accepting vouchers there, and any, anyone that can't get in there will be excited to uh have in this project as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you. Other questions? Good. All right, so are there other comments you would like to share? We're glad you're here. Thank you for being in, Lincoln.
Thank you very much. No, uh, we're very excited to continue to work in Lincoln, and uh I was sharing with Dan earlier that we do kind of these preliminary market studies before every project, and um the need for affordable housing in Lincoln is significant. Uh, obviously, anecdotally, I'm sure to you guys, as well as uh from the objective market studies that we do consistently, basically saying we can put hundreds and hundreds of units in, and the demand will be there for those units. So um, we're excited, this project specifically being in in the downtown core, walkable, uh, with transit access um and onsite parking, I think all, you know, really good aspects of the project, and feel really good uh using local architect and hopefully a design that uh the city will be happy with and that can provide much-needed units for uh for folks here in Lincoln. So we're excited to do this project and continue working in Lincoln, so.
And likewise, thank you.
For sure.
Councilman Beckyus?
Um, you touched upon it, and I would be remiss if I didn't also mention, um, I do hope that the Annex Group, um, we're excited about this development very much so, and and hopefully more developments in Lincoln as well. Um, but um, I would be remiss if I said, uh, please do consider this project as part of a larger neighborhood, a larger campus, if you will. You have a great benefit across the street for the, the new Head Start program. Uh, campus across the street, uh, obviously you have a developing telegraph neighborhood around their transit, as you, as you mentioned. Um, uh, and so um, thank you for your development in the city of Lincoln. We surely appreciate that, especially on uh low-income uh tax credit housing, um, but also uh in core neighborhoods that that really benefit them um and are literally across the street from other neighborhood improvements, other community um investments, um, making sure that the youngest in our community can succeed as well. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you both very much. Anyone else present to testify on these items? Items six A, six B, and six C. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, let's move on.
That concludes section six of our agenda. We shall now move on to section seven. Third reading, Ordinance's third reading and related resolutions. Item seven A is Change of Zone two-three-zero-one-seven, application of Justin Spooner for a change of zone from R-six Residential District to B-three Commercial District on property generally located at seven-on-one North Twenty-seventh Street, introduced by McGinnis.
Wait for it, wait for it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
Second, Beckyus?
Seconded by Beckyus. Further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven B is Annexation two-three-zero-zero-four, application of Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, Inc. to annex approximately six-point-seven-five acres, more or less, on the property generally located at West Folsom Street and West Denton Road, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven C, approving the conditional zoning and annexation agreement between the city and Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, Inc. for the annexation and development of the property generally located at the southwest corner of West Denton Road and South Folsom Street, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Beckyus. Further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seventy is Change of Zone zero-five-zero-six-one-F, application of Nebraska Horsemen's Benevolent and Protective Association, Inc. for the change of zone from A.G. Agriculture District to B-two Planned Neighborhood Business District, PUD, an expansion of approximately six-point-seven-five acres, more or less, to the southwest village, PUD, B-two Casino Area, for additional temporary parking on property generally located at West Folsom Street and West Denton Road, introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Washington. Further discussion. Seeing none, please call the vote.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. That concludes section seven of our agenda. Section eight is Resolutions First Reading, includes item eight A. Section nine is Ordinance's First Reading Related Resolutions, includes items nine A through three E. Section ten is our pending list, items ten A through ten D.
Seeing no other business, I move to adjourn.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the vote.
Shoeb?
Yes.
Suarez?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Beckyus?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero.
We are adjourned.